I actually got.
Hey, you guys are live.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 22nd, 2020 Planning Board Hearing for the Town of Brookhaven. This is a virtual hearing broadcast over the internet. Public is also involved. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call, starting with Mr. Zarcone.
Present.
Mr. Alutis.
Present.
Mr. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Dunn.
Present.
I'm Vincent Pascal, I'm present. If the public is able to see us, we'll go over a couple of ground rules. First of all, with the public question period, I'd like to start with item number. Also with us, we have Mr. Larry Constantino and Counselor to the Planning Board, Ms. Lee Ray, Secretary to the Planning Board, Ms. Ivy McCallum. I'd like to begin with item number one, Winterling Street, Tap Street at Quorum. It's a miscellaneous matter. Mr. Constantino, can you go over the application? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Ms. McCallum, I've got six present with one board member not present, that being Ms. Patricia Kelly. Want to make a note of that? Ms. McCallum?
Mr. Chairman, can I make an announcement also?
Yes.
For everyone who is in the queue waiting to participate, please put in into the Q and A function and let me know what application you're here to speak on and whether you are here for the applicant or from the public, please. Otherwise, I won't be able to let you into the hearings.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mr. Constantino?
Okay. Item number one, Winterling Street, Tap Street at Quorum. This is a 6.985 acre site, zoned A Residence One. The applicant's proposing a request Tap Street review for access from the end of the western segment of Winterling Street, and that is for a proposed four lot land division application, which is pending before the Board of Zoning Appeals. For the Board's consideration, staff has provided a recommendation. This is actually for denial of this Tap Street application, and it's subject to two additional comments, and those are last dated May 29th, 2020.
Okay, I'm not sure if the public has them. Constantino, can you read those comments so everyone can wear?
The two additional comments?
Yes, please.
So the recommendation is for denial of Tap Street access from Winterling Street. It's subject to construction of concrete carbon along the north side of Pine Road, and all lots are to be accessed from the north side of Pine Road right of way.
Thank you, Counselor. You have time, you want to see who wants to come in on this application? Counselor, I think your mic is.
Jennifer Leeds is on and Larry Davis.
Okay. Do I see Ms. Lee?
Mr. Chair, it's Larry Davis, can you hear me?
Yes, Counselor, you have an associate with you?
Yes, Jennifer Leeds, she's on. I don't know that she'll be speaking unless she is, unless she needs to.
Okay. All right, if she needs to speak, I'll just swear at that time. Okay, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Patchuck, New York, for the applicant. In reviewing this application, Mr. Chair, I would ask that the Board override staff's comments of denial and recommend approval of this Tap Street review. I have about 12 to 14 reasons as to why Tap Street review should be granted on this application, and it's going to take me a little time to go over them, so I apologize for the length, but I think the Board needs to hear that the application is better suited as it's presented than bringing it the way that Mr. Vale, by the way, who no longer is working for the town, has suggested this application be brought.
Okay, take your time and read them. This, this is one of the applications where it has to come to the Planning Board prior to going through the BZA, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
So the first point is that the lots were created, they'd be almost equal in size, where there is, there could be no future development of this. There was a large area of open space between the two lots that will be coming off of Winterling and lots that will be coming in off of Pine Road. That allows for a nice area of a buffered area where there would be no development, and it will be a nice wild nature preserve area. One of the issues that came up in designing this applicant, Leeds is on, but she has indicated to me that she had numerous conversations with both Larry Constantino and with Chris Reed regarding the formation of this application, and this is the application that was, that should be brought. What this does, it obscures the possibility of subdivision of these parcels. It provides for the least impact on the community from either Colby Drive or Winter Green Street. Just so the Board knows, simultaneously with this application, application to the Board of Zoning Appeals was made. We have already advertised, mailed, and posted that application. The amount of phone calls that I received by the neighbors that are along Winter Green Drive and Colby Drive was unbelievable, worried about roads being put in their backyards. When this application was designed, there was a designation of about a 20-foot buffer along each side of the back ends of both of the houses that are, that this lot is between, therefore allowing for more privacy. So there was great detail in coming up with a plan that would benefit both the inhabitants of the existing streets and the people that would be enjoying these lots. One of the other things that, that was discussed is the ability of, if this will close off Winterling Street, Mr. Vale has proposed everything coming in off of Pine, and the only way you can come in with off of Pine is to create flag lots. And now, if you can look at the property itself, you can see it's very narrow and very long. Flag lots would create a driveway that's in excess of 1,000 feet long in order to meet the one acre zoning requirements. A thousand-long driveway is, I've been, I've been to zoning hearings where Mr. Reed has indicated that that common driveway of that length is excessive, and he would like, he does not like to allow those types of common driveways. One of the other things it promotes is if you're, since we're looking at the aerial, which is on the screen, you'll have four families that will be coming out of the same driveway right on Pine Street, and as you can see, there are two roads that come right in on Pine Street, one on the east, one on the west, that are no more than 150 feet away from each other. So now you'll have almost three roads exiting the same road within 450 feet of each other. It truly makes no sense to have the, to have two of the houses coming off of Winterling and then come down Winter Green Drive and exit onto Pine Road through an existing road is a lot safer for the community. My client has, based on the reliance that he got from staff, has spent over $15,000 in engineering that would, a denial would go by the wayside, and we'd have to reinvent the wheel and redo this application all over again. That is economic, economic problems my client should not have to face, especially when, when Jen Leeds went to staff directly on this and formulated a way to subdivide this property, and then we have a staff member that recommends a denial. By the way, the beginning of this, Jen met with planning way back in September of 2019. So this is not a process where we just, where my client just willy-nilly decided to plot four lots and then bring it to the Board for approval. This has been a long process, and they vetted out as many issues as they can. They've gone so far as to get Suffolk County Department of Health, Health Department approval. Everything is ready for approval, the only thing they need is a secret determination from town, and the four lots will be approved. The Board should note that my client has the ability to bring in six lots as of right by bringing the road connecting Pine Road and Winterling Road, and bringing an entire road down the center of that property. We looked at that, that made no sense either. Why? Because of the neighboring communities, the impact it would have had on them, the traffic that would have come down on that road, the connecting of Winterling between the two communities, there were a lot of reasons why that should not be, and that's why, that's another reason why it was designed this way. We're in a very good market, we were hoping to be started on this, on this project. As COVID is coming to an end, the real estate market has picked up, the need for housing out here has increased, and we were hoping to have a shovel in the ground for potential homeowners in the fall. A denial will take us back to the drawing board and probably delay us for another six months to one year. As I indicated, it is better to come off of the, the application the way it's presented rather than what Mr. Vale has proposed. Again, it's less impact on the neighbors. This will, oh, if I bring this application to the Board of Zoning Appeals as a four lot land division coming in off of flag lots, they will have a problem with Winterling fronting open space back there or one of the lots. They will be concerned about further, further division of those, and they will look to redesign that application as well. I have been before them many times. I know how they think, I know they're concerned about the ability of further subdivision after they have already granted a subdivision, especially on lots that are oversized. These lots are going to average an acre and a half to two acres in size, and the Board will have great concern over further subdivision. The way it's designed right now, there is no way they can be further subdivided. It would be, it's impossible. This is the least restrictive means of accomplishing the goals that my client is presenting with. Whenever we bring an application, we look to get the fewest variances, the, the best way to bring an application to the Town of Brookhaven, this application is brought that it has the least restrictive means. We're only asking for frontage variances on Winterling Street and on Pine Road. Other than that, there are no variances that are requested. Bringing in flag lots is going to change that application, it's going to change the design, it's going to change the effect on the neighborhood. One of the other things that this application does, it presents the highest and best use of the property. Just so you know, a denial of this will probably subject my client to bringing a federal lawsuit as a constitutional taking because they, he would be denied his highest and best use. We're trying to design things that are in accordance with the community, in accordance with the environment, and in accordance with the, the return that my client can get on his investment. One of the last points that I have is that highway staff comments supported the application as they made provisions for coming in off of Winterling Street. So before the Board has any questions, actually, I'll take any questions the Board may have right now, and then I'll have further comment at the end.
Counselor, we're going to come back to you. I want to know if anyone's in the public who would like to speak on this before we question the applicant. Counselor? Lee?
I have no one to speak on this.
Okay, all right, so are there any questions by the Board to Mr. Davis?
No.
Larry, you, you said you'd have to bring a driveway down the middle of the entire property. Could, could a driveway be put on the east or west that runs along one of the perimeters, along the barrier line?
Yes, it doesn't have to go down the middle, it can run off of either the east or the west side. That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Wouldn't that, other than the fact it would give you another ingress egress on Pine Road, would that be an alternative?
It's, I think that's what Mr. Vale was alluding to in his, in his comments, but again, a common driveway will leave four families down the center of a, well, not the center of, but down a, a common driveway and dumping into a street where you already have ingress and egress not far away on either side of it. So in essence, you would be dumping almost three roads within like 400 feet of each other onto a road, and it's a traffic, it's a traffic issue, it's a safety.
I, I understand, I'm just trying to reason to myself. I mean, I understand that this A1 zoning, if you did it that way, couldn't you get additional lots out of this property?
No, the zoning board is only permitted by law to hear for, four lot land division. We could, if we brought in roadway and go it as an as-of-right application, we would yield six, maybe a seventh lot, but to go before the zoning board, they have jurisdiction over only up to four lots, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now that seventh lot could be a workforce lot, right?
Yes, probably.
Any other questions by the Board?
Make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
I think if you, if you did bring, it would have to be a pretty good, I think a 26-foot wide driveway to get there, Fire Department Access Road, if you did against one of the property lines, say the, the west property line, and all the, the people that live on, on Winter Green, their backyard will now abut a roadway instead of what is proposed here with a 20-foot, you know, natural vegetated buffer. But I, I also wonder if the driveways that they are proposing might have to be a little bit more substantial than what they're showing in terms of fire department access, but those are just my comments.
May I speak? It's Jennifer Leeds, I don't know if you can hear me.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now you can speak.
I just wanted to also mention that I actually live on Sequoia Drive, it's off of Pine Road, it's across the highway, but I know this community very well. One of the concerns because of, you know, social media, I'm on the Facebook page, and I could see when we first went in there doing test holes and such, the neighborhood was very upset, as Larry said. He got, he got many phone calls prior to the April Board of Zoning Appeals hearing. I feel that if we do a flag lot off of Pine, which was what I discussed early on with Chris Reed, just like you're talking about this driveway, now you're affecting many backyards with a long driveway going up. So here you have, maybe there's five homes, if we can go back to the land division map, maybe there's five homes that the cars are passing, and they're 20 feet off the line because we've, we've proposed a buffer. So if you go down to the bottom of that map, when you get closer to Pine Road, if you pull that up, you can see you're 20 feet in, you know, off the, the west side properties, and then there's, you know, a driveway going up to that back property, but it will, again, just be one family worth of cars coming in and out, and they're 20 feet from one, two, three, four, five of the, five of the backyards where people have swimming pools and they're relaxing, and they, they're used to for all these years having woods behind their home. So I really feel there's less impact. If we have to come off of Pine with the rest of these lots, we'll definitely have to put drainage in the driveways, the driveways will have to be wider, you know, you have four families passing through now, and you're definitely going to be obviously going up further past more backyards, and I don't think we could hold a 20-foot buffer on the one side, I think we'd have to use some of that. So I'm, I really feel that the way our application was, was designed is, I think it's better for the community and for, for the people who live along both those streets.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes. Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose speaking.
Looking at the, the way it's laid out and the possibility of doing 1,000-foot driveway, my comment would be that I think it would have more impact on the homes that it, the street is running behind, because it's going to have to be a bigger, more substantial road to, to take on that traffic. And also, if we had a 1,000-foot private driveway like that, I made a comment before that if, if there was a major snowstorm and people would, and if you, trying to clear a 1,000-foot driveway for four families to get in and out without the help of the town would be, I think, a pretty big undertaking, and it could be, lead to these people being snowbound. So that, that would be a concern of mine to try to get the guy at the end of the lot out, that's why it's, that, that's just my comment.
Okay. Mr. Davis, did you want to address any of those concerns?
I agree with most of the concerns, actually, and I didn't even bring up the one about the fire and emergency vehicles. 1,000-foot common driveway is a long way, it's much easier to access houses off the design plan that we have right now, rather than try to go up 1,000 feet. First of all, it'd be, I think it may be difficult for a fire department or an emergency to find one of those houses in the event that there should be one of those emergencies. Mr. Chair, just so the Board is aware, I had, I did have discussion with Miss Ray this afternoon, and I would be willing to hold this open so for, until the next hearing, so that potentially we can have further discussion and try to come up with a resolution that I think both parties are happy with.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I was going to request that, only because unfortunately, the person who did the findings is no longer with us, so we can't question him, his rationale. So we're going to hold this to a date certain, July 27th, I think that's the next meeting. Is that okay with the Board?
That's fine.
I think we, we're going to have to take a good look at this and then come up with perhaps different findings, and we could resolve it on that next meeting. Counselor, are you available for that, Mr. Davis?
Yes, that will be just fine, I'll, I'll contact Miss Ray, and we will, we'll have some conference and some conversation on it.
Yeah, I think everybody would be better off if we can further discuss this now, okay? Whose motion is this?
It's John Rose, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rose, can I have a motion to hold this to a date certain of July 27th, 2020?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to hold this application open to a date certain of July 27th, which is our next public board, public hearing for planning.
All right, motion by Mr. Rose?
Second, by Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zarcone?
I'd vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Let the record show that I think Ms. Kelly joined the meeting.
I am here.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, how do you vote?
I am here, I vote yes.
And if the Chair votes yes, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to this application number two, also a miscellaneous matter, Three Village Historic Museum at Tottoket. Counsel, do we have anyone in the public, in, in the chat room yet?
I do, I have, I just let someone in, there's someone here.
Okay, Mr. Constantino?
Yes, Three Village Historic Museum at Tottoket. The site is located on the east side of North Country Road and the southeast corner of Ridgeway Drive in Tottoket. It's a 2.2-acre parcel zoned A1 Residence. The applicant's proposing revised plans for a small addition to the footprint of a previously approved museum building, and this was a reconstruction of a dismantle historic landmark barn, which is to be used as a museum for the Three Village Historical Society. For the Board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered one and two, and those are last dated June 12th, 2020.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Counselor?
I think the architect, John Kniff, was here.
Yes, he's on.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Mr. Kniff?
Yes, hi, good afternoon.
Good. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay. You want to go over the application and the elevation modifications?
Sure, I'll go over them. Effectively, as you can see, there's a small wing associated with this building that housed a small room and some lavatories originally, and in doing our final calculations with the Fire Marshal and with the Building Department on the occupancy rating, based on the occupancy rating calculations per our building code, our floor area, net floor area, since we changed some things on the inside of the building in terms of what would be fixed and what would not be fixed, along with interpretation that differed between the calculation for the occupancy, between myself and the Fire Marshal, I've obviously conceded to that, but what that did was is it triggered a requirement for a laboratory service bathroom for the public, which created a requirement to increase, and that's a good drawing to have up on there, you'll see that hatched area. The hatched area around that plan is the area that we increased, had to increase that section. It doesn't affect the barn, the historic barn, this does not affect in terms of calculations our stormwater, and it doesn't require any change in utility, nor does it encroach on any issues related to zoning in terms of setback. We got lucky that the expansion to accommodate the plumbing code and the requirement for the larger section of building really has had no impact on anything that had been planned. It's visually identical to the shape and form of the one-story structure at shed roof volume, and we just basically, we did make it a little bit deeper, but we did make it a little bit longer. We represented them in the color renderings, and they are probably not discernible in terms of, from, you probably couldn't even tell, looking at the old renderings to the newer.
Okay, and there's no changes to the FAR as far as parking, or is there sufficient parking?
No, everything, everything met with the parking, we still stayed on the nose, we had a little bit of room for everything, so we're really pretty happy with the, with the outcome of this increase.
All right, Mr. Kniff, I believe, Counsel, we have someone like to speak from the public?
I have no one on this one.
No one? All right, Board, have any questions? No questions from the Board, seeing that, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close this public hearing, place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone, can I have a second, please?
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion seconded by Mr. Zarcone, Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Kniff.
Thank you, have a good day.
Yes, you too.
Mr. Chairman, can I make another announcement that if you are in the queue as an attendee, please let me know what number you are here for to speak on, and whether you are representing the applicant, or whether you are from the public. I have several people that are in the queue, and I don't know what application they're here for.
Item number three, also a miscellaneous matter, FKK Incorporated, 711 at Calverton. Ms. Constantino?
Yes, FKK Incorporated, 711. This site is located at 1 Edwards Avenue in Calverton. It's a 0.989 acre site, Zone J Business 5, and the applicant's proposing a facade renovation at an existing gas station and convenience store, including the legalization of a six-foot by 22-foot propane tank distribution area and a new dumpster enclosure. For the Board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered one through 12, and those are last dated May 20th, 2020.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I have people on for the applicant.
Okay, I don't.
Mario, Rick Bartlett.
Okay. Mr. Bartlett?
Yeah, I believe Mario is going to handle presenting, I'm here in a subordinate role.
Okay, are either of you a Counselor or attorneys?
No, sir.
Okay, please, both of you raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
I do.
Okay, all right, I guess Mario, you're going to handle the application?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Yes, I'm on the here, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the owner of the property. This is for a proposed 711, it's already has a CO for Convenience Mart, so we're applying for a, you know, So we're applying for a, you know, change of use that was recommended as per the planning board, the planning department, for some facade changes outside. There was an approval back in 1998, and there were some adherences that didn't coincide that the current owner will take care of, which includes the dumpster area was approved for 10 by 10. And he has agreed to abide by that and reduce that to 10 by 10. And there was an open permit, but I can tell you that the permit has been renewed, and that was for the 22 by 8 extension that's to the building. And that's basically it. I am the architect here for answering any questions.
This also has a propane refilling station, I understand?
Yes, that's part of the application is to legalize the propane. He doesn't have propane, you know, he doesn't fill propane tanks outside. It's just a cage. It's already filled tanks that are dropped off, and then the company picks up the empty.
Okay, and this is something you have to go to the Fire Marshal for, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You have the application in the works already?
No, I don't.
That's the only picture we have in existing, one I'm looking at now, Larry? The convenience stores that sits?
Looks like those are the only photos we have.
Okay. Is there any necessity that the parking lot looks pretty beat up? Is there anything in the comments about restriping and fixing the parking lot?
I believe the intent is to top coat the whole lot and restripe the entire lot.
Okay. Do we see that on the site plan with ADA access as well?
Yes, there is existing ADA access, which is provided if you look on that.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm losing your connection.
If you look at that front image that shows the Tiger Mart that the arrow is on right now, there is a handicap drop curb to the left, the left side of that, to the left of the building, and that's where the handicap parking is located, right there.
And you are sealing that whole thing and restriping, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? We're going after the public on this, Counselor?
I have no one here to speak on this.
Any questions by the board?
Yes, one. Is there any reason the 711 sign is not centered on the doors? It's off just a little bit. Could that be just centered, the 711 actually self be centered on the entry door?
It was lined up so that the actual 711 logo is directly above the doors.
It's not.
It's above the doors, Rick, not the window.
Right.
Yeah, I know, but it's not. It's off-center. I don't know, if you're going to, if your intention is to do that, that'll be fine.
Okay, I don't know which drawing you're looking at.
Well, let me, can you hear me? May I have the seat? The 711, the actual seven with the 11 over it, is directly over the doorway. Are you talking about moving the actual sign so it's in the center of the total width of the building?
You know, maybe it's an optical illusion, but it looks like that the white band with the 711 is not centered on the doorway. Perhaps it is, it's just maybe it's an optical illusion.
Okay.
Other questions by the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone. I have a question in regards to the fuel pumps. The only thing we're going to look at right now is the canopy for the fuel pumps for an approval?
Yes.
Well, the canopy exists, we're not making any changes to the canopy.
Right, but you're looking for a certificate of occupancy for it. Number three, see number three on the recommendations?
Yes.
So that's all we're doing with that, it's just the canopy? We're going to correct that and get a certificate of occupancy with it?
That's correct, right, Mario?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That was included on the original site plan approved by the board, but they just never obtained a certificate for it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm, this is at the site, which is right by exit 71 of the expressway, correct?
Yeah, I think it's on the northwest corner.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like staff recommendation number eight takes care of the accessible parking stalls and I don't know about the rest of the, let's see. Eight takes care of the accessible parking stall. I don't know if it takes care of the rest of the striping in the parking lot.
Mario, do you want to answer any questions or concerns?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the connection. Was there a question?
My question was, do you want to address any of the concerns or anything that was just raised by the board? Are you okay with that?
No, we're okay with that.
Okay.
I still have one other question, this is Pete Zarcone. I just want to ask, number nine, it says remove 55-gallon drum from site, so there's only one 55-gallon drum, or any more, or just the one?
Mario, did you hear that question? I'm not sure what he's referring to.
No, I'm not, I'm going to be honest with you. I emailed, I don't have the list of recommendations. I emailed, requested them.
It reads as remove 55-gallon drum from the site. I'm just wondering if there aren't more than just the one, or if it's just the one. I'd like to just make that remove all 55-gallon drums from the site.
I don't think that'd be a problem at all.
Okay, so I'm just going to amend that to make it remove all 55-gallon drums from the site.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Other questions? See, now can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Dunn.
Second by Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zarcone?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I second the motion, aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
You too.
Item number four is a site plan with variances. St. Joseph's College Student Center with parking at Patchogue.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say this again? I have several people that are in the queue still that have not contacted me. If you have contacted me, I have the correct hearing for you. If you have not contacted me in the Q and A or the chat function, I don't know what you're here for, I don't know what application you're here for. And I still have probably seven people in the queue.
Counsel, perhaps in the Q and A in the chatroom, if they can put, maybe they just want to view the public hearing, is there a way they can respond to that?
They can also let me know that. But some people have not responded, and so if they do wish to speak, they'll need to let me know what they're here for.
Mr. Constantino, St. Joseph's College?
Yes, item number four, St. Joseph's College Student Center. The site is located at 155 West Row Boulevard in Patchogue. It is 39.898 acres in size, and it's zoned A Residence 1 and A Residence 2. The proposal is for phase construction of a 38,000-square-foot student center and approximately 70,300-square-foot additional parking area. It requires variances by the planning board for certain land development standards. For the board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered 1 through 19, and those are last dated June 9, 2020.
The applicant present?
Yes.
Who's the applicant on this?
Yes, I have several people in for number four.
Okay, I need the applicant, who's the applicant?
Eric Russo should be the representative.
All right, I'll have to let him in. I didn't know he was here on this one.
Mr. Russo, are you there? Mr. Russo? I have Robert Nelson. Mr. Nelson, are you a part of this application?
Yes, I'm the engineer.
You are, okay, is your counsel with you?
They're supposed to be here along with representatives from the college. Yes. And also the architect. There you go.
Hello? Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm here.
Mr. Russo, Counselor, how are you?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
All right, Counsel, you want to go over the application for the board and the public?
Certainly. But I do have with me the president of the college, Don Boomgarden, who I would like, who would like to speak, and I would like, in request, that he's with me here in the room, and he would like to just present to the board, so maybe you want to swear him in?
Yes, okay.
And the others that are here, which I don't know if they're showing up on Lee's screen, but is Bob Nelson, Scott Risinger of Nelson &amp; Pope, Steve Higami for Cameron Engineering, and Paul Bentel, the architect from Bentel &amp; Bentel. We're going to try and just present the application to the board as questions, and we have to respond, we'll address from there.
Okay, so let me swear everyone all at once. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. All right, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Mr. Constantino pointed out, we are here today representing St. Joseph's College for their proposal on the campus to create a student center of approximately 38,000 square feet in Phase 1, and in Phase 2, additional parking on the campus as being proposed in the site plan. There are various variances that are required as it relates to the site plan application. We appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals last Wednesday, and the Zoning Board approved our application for the variance relief where we were seeking to create a building greater than 15,000 square feet in height, because we had 38,000 proposed. The particular building that we are creating is to be used for additional classrooms, as well as for meeting rooms that will be used by the college and then the community as needed or if requested, as well as a place for students to congregate in between classes. As the board is aware, you've seen an application previously about three years ago when, instead of proposing a student center, they were looking at three dormitories at the time. But I will let the president of the college address that. So let me turn it over to the president, and then I'll continue with the presentation.
Okay, then your name, sir?
My name is Don Boomgarden. I'm the president of St. Joseph's College. I appeared before the board three years ago, Mr. Pascal, and I was really happy with the result of that meeting. You approved our request for a student center in two residence halls. But after we started to move forward with that project, and that was a project that was initiated by my predecessor, the financial numbers for the project really didn't work out for us. We started to see that the costs of construction had risen considerably. And there was some question about whether or not the residence halls really fit into the general philosophy and mission of the college. So after some conversations with the board of trustees, I decided to put that project on hold and instead move forward with a different project that I think fits the college much better, and that is a student center, which will be a place for our students to congregate, to continue to learn, because it will also have classrooms and learning spaces. It will have a dining area for the students as well, and it's a much-needed building. It'll be the last large building built on the campus, and it will be part of the current quadrangle. It will finish off the current quadrangle quite beautifully. So the idea behind the structure is that it will provide learning spaces, office spaces for faculty. It will not be a residence hall of any kind, and it will also contain an art gallery and other meeting spaces, which would certainly be appropriate for community activities as well. We really see the student center as something which will connect the college even more with the community of Patchogue and the area around us. And I think it's something that will also meet the real need of our students. You know, we're a commuter college primarily, and it will give the students a chance to meet together and be together in a way that will really help us with retention and the recruitment of students. So the mission of the center is integral. It's a part of the mission of St. Joseph's. And this was an idea that was actually developed years ago by Sister Elizabeth Hill when she was the president of the college, and I'm basically continuing forward with her vision.
Okay, very good. He'd be glad to know my granddaughter graduated from St. Joe several years ago, and she's doing very well.
Excellent.
He enjoyed it very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions of the president, then I'll continue with the presentation.
Well, you can continue, and I'm going to go after the public, and the board will have questions, okay, Counselor?
Okay, that's fine. So the important thing to note about today is that if the board does grant the particular application that we have before you and approves of the secret determination as an unlisted action as lead agency, we then move on to our financing component, and we have a meeting with the DASNY Board on July 15. So one of the timing scenarios that we've had with this application, starting with its filing back in March, has been that we wanted to meet and move forward with the bonds that were required to construct the project. I cannot say enough how, in the age of COVID here that we've had to deal with, the commissioner and Larry Constantino, who I've had the pleasure of being involved with for approximately 34 years, and this is probably my last application with him, has been very helpful in expediting and moving this application along to get it to where it is today, so that we can move on from here with our financing. That being said, I provided you with eight photographs, which I believe Larry has incorporated into the presentation that shows you the campus and shows you where the building is going to be situated on the existing football field. What you were looking at just there were the building elevations that were prepared by our project architect, which is Paul Bentel from Bentel &amp; Bentel. That's the photograph where the building will be situated, that you're seeing in front of the board. And I believe the next photograph shows you its relationship in front of the existing building of O'Connell Hall. And if you go down through the photographs, you'll see that's the quadrangle that the president was referencing. And if you continue along, you will also see, I believe, the entrances into and out of the site. That is a photograph of the lake adjoining the property, because there were concerns in prior hearings that there would be noise from dormitories or light, and that's showing you the significance of the greenery that's surrounding the lake that the college fronts on. That's the intersection at Savannah, and I believe that is Waverly Avenue, which is a recommendation from Suffolk County DPW that we upgrade the signalization at that location. And then I think the last photograph is showing you the light that is at the corner of Roe Boulevard and Waverly Avenue as well. We provided these because these were locations that came up in discussion with staff and concerns from the public. We are, and there's a 711 and a mini-center on opposite sides of Roe Boulevard at that intersection. The particular streets that are involved are Savannah, which runs east and west, and north and south are Champlain and Autobahn. And our entrance into the college parking lots from those locations, as well as off of the North Service Road, which you're seeing there in the aerial, which comes in off of Sunrise Highway when you turn off on Waverly and start to head east, and you get to the football field area, which you're seeing where the athletic field is, that they're going to put the proposed building. We've reviewed the comments, the 19 comments that Larry referenced earlier. We have no objection to saying. What I would point out is that Bob Nelson of Nelson &amp; Pope and Scott Risinger, who are engineers for the project and designed the site plan, they are in the process of finalizing the SWIP. It has not yet been filed. We don't anticipate a problem with that, but we're waiting for the final comments from the town engineering department and also from your engineering consultant of LKM. In addition, in terms of all of the others, the highway department, Jermaine Ortiz called last week and talked about as a possibility the closing or discontinuance or abandonment of the roadways of Savannah. of the roadways of Savannah, Champlain, and Autobahn, and St. Joseph's College has no objection to that. But you need to note that the first 100 to 150 feet on both Autobahn and Champlain are within the village of Patchog. I have spoken with the village mayor as early again as this morning, who had no objection to the discontinuance or the abandonment of the roads within the village. However, that would easily accommodate what would be Autobahn, but on Champlain, which is to the west, the strip center there and the college building parking lots run off of the first hundred-odd feet, so that area of the road between the shopping mini-mall and the wellness center of the college would not be closed. We would seek to go, and as I discussed with Jermaine Ortiz, discontinuing the rest of the roadways, but that would not be part of this application. It was a comment that they asked if we would consider, and our goal here is that we're going to construct the student center with, with the necessary approvals in the year 2021 in the spring, and that we would build the parking lot after the student center is up in 2023. The, we would file an amended site plan if everybody's in agreement with those subsequently in the future to address those particular issues. We've met with the village of Patchog and with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, because the sewer district is the village of Patchog in this particular case, and their pump station would be in the front portion in the area by Autobahn to a little bit to the east there, in between the circular driveway, and that location is where we would be considering to put the pump station. The health department is also willing to work with us in phasing the project in over a four-year period, as is the village of Patchog to curtail costs as it relates to having to provide sewers to the entire campus. We reviewed all of the comments that were provided by Mr. Constantino and Mr. Schroeder, and we have no objection to any of those, and we fully understand what is required. We have provided you with drawings that Paul Bentel, from Bentel &amp; Bentel Architect, has designed, and if you look at those drawings that I think Mr. Constantino was showing you previously, the buildings are steel-framed structures with metal decks and concrete floors. They're made of brick and limestone with aluminum and glass curtain walls, and there is louvers for solar shading as well as roofing, which are rigid tapered insulation. And there are brick pavers that are running, as you can see from the site plan, from the building onto the quadrangle in keeping with the style and the designs of the building. If you have any further questions, we'd be happy to go over them. We know that the matter has become one of local determination from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. We've reviewed the fire comments. We're prepared to put in the necessary hydrant and sprinkler systems throughout the property, and DASNY as well as SHIFA has agreed that your board is the lead agency, which is what we need in order to proceed with our financing. I, I, there was a comment letter from one resident in the area that was concerned about traffic on Route One on Roe Boulevard. There were no one with any comments coming before us at the zoning board of appeals last Wednesday, and as far as the comment letter that was provided in reviewing it and discussing it with the college, the traffic that's being considered on Roe Boulevard is not stemming from the college. It must be coming from area residents or contractors or people who are shortcutting from North Ocean Avenue to Waverly to avoid traffic either on the Sunrise or the Service Road. I looked over a petition that was filed back in 2017 at the zoning board. The individual who's expressing concerns today does not even appear on that petition that was there in 17 that was ameliorated immediately by rerouting a busing from the Mount Carmel Church and allowing commuter students to come from that location to the campus. So unless you have any further questions, that would pretty much be what we have to go forward with today, and I think fair time and consideration.
All right, the board received that comment letter from the resident. We incorporate that as part of the package for the final findings.
Mr. Chairman, this is Karen Dunn. Can I just ask Mr. Russo a quick question?
Go ahead.
Pardon my ignorance, Mr. Russo, but you referred to two acronyms in, as agencies that said that the planning board should have jurisdiction over this. Can you just tell me what those two agencies are, because I didn't recognize?
Sure, I apologize. One was from the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, which is DASNY, and the other was from the New York State Department of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, and they, both the historic recreation department came back and said there was nothing of historical significance in the proposed area, and they had no objection to the action. DASNY, as a requirement for the financing, also requires that there be a lead agency and that the lead agency be designated accordingly in order to proceed with the financing. DASNY normally would be the lead agency, but in this particular instance, going back to January and February when we were discussing the application with town planning staff, the town planning department determined, and the commissioner of the department came back and said they would prefer, given the prior application history, that they be the agency that makes the determination, meaning your board, and as such, the village of Patchog, the Suffolk County Planning Commission, all the respective agencies, including DASNY and New York State Department, has sort of demurred to the town planning board to make that decision. And there is a letter dated as of June 18th last Thursday, which finalized that as far as DASNY was concerned, and I apologize.
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Reed?
I have someone who's in the meeting. I don't know if they're with the applicants or if they're from the public, because they have not answered. If, and I've questioned them separately in a chat, is there one here who would like to speak on the application? All right, then.
No one?
No.
Do you have that name? I could tell you if it's one of our consultants.
It's S-H-A-D-J-I-Y-A-M-E.
Yes, that's Steve Higami. He is our engineer who's working on our sanitary design system with the health department in the village of Patchog.
Okay, thank you.
And the sewer agency. So unless you have a question about the sanitary system or the sewers, he would not be involved, and I believe he should have been sworn in. He was one that I had asked.
Just confirming.
All right, any questions by the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, closes public hearing and places matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Kelly.
Chairman, Board Number Pete Zalkone, I second that motion.
Second, I'm Mrs. Zalkone. Mr. Willoudis?
I vote aye.
Mr. Rose?
I vote aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven oh. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening and good luck to you as well.
You too, Eric.
Have a good day.
Love.
Moving on to site plan with special permit, RA 225 at Port Jeff Station.
Now they can. Can you guys hear?
Oh, wait, Mr. Constantino.
Item number five, RA 225 at Port Jefferson Station. This site is located at the northwest corner of Sheep pasture road and Dark Hollow Road in Port Jefferson Station. It's a 4.79 acre site zoned L1 industrial, and the applicant is proposing the demolition of existing residential structures and construction of an 87,510 square foot mini-storage warehouse with associated site improvements, along with special permits for mini-storage warehouse and accessory outdoor or overnight parking of registered vehicles, along with the variance requested for a residential buffer. Off of the board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered one through 11, and those are last dated May 21st, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Constantino. Was this parcel recently rezoned?
This parcel was relatively recently rezoned, yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, who, what the names of the applicant?
Let's see. I don't know who's going to speak initially. I have several people on, so would you like to begin?
Dan Rivera, or Pepperaro, and Stephen LaRocco, those are the applicants?
I'm going to change the name here.
They're muted.
And also, on the screen for Daniel Scard, I know there are attorneys there as well.
Yeah, sorry, I'm logged in with Daniel Scard's account. My name is William Cafrey. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We also have Dan Pepperaro here. As you mentioned, he's separately logged in. He's our project engineer from the Laurel Group, and also Steve LaRocco from Frank Ralph Architect PC. He's the project architect.
All right, counsel, thank you. Can I have your associates please raise their right hand and be sworn in? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, counsel?
Do we swear, Mr. Pepperaro?
Yeah, I did both at once.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, members of the board. This is an application by RA 225 LLC for site plan approval and associated special permits for the use of the property as a mini-storage. It's permitted in an L Industrial One zone, subject to the issuance of a special permit by the planning board pursuant to Section 85 569-G of the Town Code. We also seek a special permit for outdoor overnight parking as an accessory to that principal mini-storage use, and additionally, a waiver of a 25-foot buffer requirement in the northwest corner of the property. The application, at this point, has been through several rounds of comments with the planning department staff and revised in response to those comments, and at this point, I believe we've addressed all of the comments that the planning staff has, has addressed and has asked.
What is the reason for the relief on the northwest corner?
So there is a 25-foot buffer requirement between adjoining residential property and in the northwest corner. As you can see, there's only going to be 10 feet that we can provide. However, it's really going to be a minimal, a minimal waiver. The, the adjoining residential property happens to be owned by a company that shares common ownership with the applicant, and it's the site of a planned retirement community, a 92 apartment development, the closest, that's currently under construction. The closest, the closest building in that, the closest building in that development to the property line is a good 500 feet away from the property line. So, so going down from 25 feet away from the property line to, to 10 feet, that 15-foot difference won't make much difference, because again, on the other side, the property is a good, like I said, the closest building is about 500 feet away. So that's the reason for that, for that relatively minimal.
Oh, you answered my question. Okay. You want to continue on?
I do. Thank, I do, thank you. So as was mentioned in the introduction to this application, this property was granted a change of zone last year. It was previously B Residence One, and it was changed to its current zoning of L Industrial One. And in connection with granting that change of zone, the town board imposed a condition that the use of the property be specifically limited to the mini-storage use. So that condition has been memorialized, along with a number of other conditions, and a declaration of covenants and restrictions that have been recorded against the property. And so hence, although there are, you know, as, as the board is well aware, there are many other potential uses in an L Industrial One zone with that condition that's been recorded in the CNRs, this, the proposed use by applicant is literally the only legal use that can now be made of this property. And because the change of zone was sought with the, with the use as, as mini-storage in mind, that at the time of granting the change of zone, the town board actually did take into consideration what I would describe as typical planning considerations, and imposed several conditions which generally are designed to make sure that the, that the application will comply with the requirements for the issuance of a special permit, both the, both the general requirements under the Town Code, that the use not impair adjacent properties, that it not have an adverse impact on the town, that it will not have an adverse impact on safety, health, and welfare, and that it will be generally harmonious with the, with the zoning code, the purpose and intent of the zoning code. And as to the specific, as to the specific criteria for granting a mini-storage, those criteria include limiting storage to dead storage, no hazardous or flammable materials will be stored, the approval of the architectural elevations, which those have all been submitted at this point, that the storage unit doors be screened from visibility from residential areas and streets, which they will, as, as you'll hear from Mr. Pepperaro, and you'll, you'll hear there's extensive, extensive buffering, minimum of a 50-foot natural or landscape buffer, which, as I'll get to in a minute, we're actually going to exceed, that all paved areas be screened from view with landscaping or natural area and decorative fencing, and that there be decorative walls or fencing along the setback lines and property lines. And this application meets all of those criteria, and again, many of them are, were addressed by the conditions that the town board imposed, which are part of that covenants and restrictions document.
Absolutely. I ask you a question. The conditions, the conditions imposed by the town board, your request for a special permit for outdoor storage or parking, I didn't see those conditions. So is that going to be a problem as far as if a special permit should be granted for outdoor storage or parking?
No, there's, there is, there is, there was one condition that I will, that I will get to. It's, 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 well, the only condition on the special parking, I believe, is in the, wasn't, it wasn't placed upon it by the town board, but a requirement of getting is a, a permit, a special permit for parking is that the, the parking be not in the front yard.
The reason I, yeah, the reason I asked is because you, earlier statement, you mentioned it was specific to a mini-storage.
Oh, but include, it was for the storage with the accessory parking use. That was, that was the way it was granted. So that's, that's not an issue. So the conditions that were imposed already by the town board are that the detached signage, if any, be monument style. The building height is limited to a maximum of 35 feet, and they actually imposed a requirement of a 75-foot natural buffer from Sheep pasture road and Dark Hollow Road, except for where the driveway is, so that, we're providing that, of course, so the, that criteria actually exceeds the standard special permit criteria of a 50-foot buffer. So we're actually going to be providing the 75-foot buffer, that there's only one access driveway. Again, these are all the conditions that are part of the CNRs recorded in connection with the change of zone, that there only be one access driveway on Sheep pasture road, and that it be aligned with the church driveway across the street, that there be, the materials be used, high-quality architecture and building materials to give the building a residential styling, which we have done. And again, the biggest condition that they imposed was that this is the, this is the only use that can be made of the property is as a mini-storage use. So we, we meet all those criteria and more. With respect, just to get back for a moment to the special permit for the accessory outdoor overnight parking, those criteria, that it be at least 50 feet away from the roadway, which, again, we have a 75-foot buffer, so that we more than meet that criteria, that it be screened from view. And again, here we have a 75-foot vegetated buffer, and I think there's also a fence with decorative slats, so, so it'll be well screened from view. And again, as I mentioned, that the parking not be in the front yard, but only on the side and the rear, which it is, and...
Is the parking specific for automobiles and trucks, or are you planning on putting campuses, boats, things of that nature?
There'll be, it won't be limited to vehicles. There'll be, there'll be campers will be able to park. They have, they'll have to, there is a requirement that they be registered, but there'll be, there may be campers. There may be boats as well.
On trailers, not on blocks?
On trailers only, not on blocks, correct. So I had already addressed the, the distance requirement in connection with the adjoining, the adjoining community in the northwest corner, so unless the board has any specific questions for me, I'd like to introduce our project engineer now, Dan Pepperaro from the Laurel Group.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I think Mr. Cafrey did a pretty expensive job there, so I'll just walk you through the site plan here. Site is located on northwest corner of Sheep pasture road and Dark Hollow Road. There is one proposed access point off of Sheep pasture road, full access, and it is in line with the existing curb cut for the church across the street. The proposed driveway entrance is sort of a C shape into the site, which really minimizes your ability to view. The proposed driveway entrance is sort of a C shape into the site, which really minimizes your ability to view into the, into the site. So the geometry of that curb cut really prevents any direct views into the site, which is aided by the fact that we have pretty extensive buffers of a minimum of 75 feet of existing vegetation that is to remain, and that actually increases up to about double that, almost 150 feet up at the biggest part of that buffer. As is the case with most of our storage buildings, the site is split up into two distinct portions. The upfront portion in front of the building is the public access portion. So you could drive up off the street, park in any of those stalls, go into the office, rent a unit, or access your unit from there, given that you have a PIN. Or if you have already rented a unit, you could proceed to the secured access portion of the site, which is the rear portion, and it's controlled via two gates, one on either side of the building. So you would have a PIN, plug in your PIN, the gate would lift up, and you'd enter into the secure section of the site, where you then have access to the loading zones, the roll-up doors for you to unload directly into your unit, or there's another door to load from back there, that you could park your car on the west side of the building, go into the loading area, unload your car when you're in the secure area. Once you're done unloading your vehicle, you would drive back out through the left gate and then back on Sheep pasture road. The site is surrounded on both street frontages by 75-foot buffer of landscaping. Additionally, the, there's an ornamental fence that is in line with the front of the building, more or less, that is part of that gate assembly, and then extends in line with that. And then going down the sides of the property are chain link fences with privacy slats. And at the rear of the property, because it abuts Long Island Railroad right of way, there's a standard Long Island Railroad anti-climb fence back there that they always request on sites that are pointing that right of way. The parking up front in front of the building is buffered from the street via both the 75-foot buffer that is there, that is going to remain undisturbed, and additionally, the use of a hedgerow. The same goes for the parking that is on the east side, for a parking stall on the east side, and we extended that hedge all the way up until basically a 75-foot buffer. So everywhere that we could put a hedgerow, we did. The outdoor storage, there are 33 stalls, those 16 stalls on the east of the building, and then 17 stalls on the north of the building. They are all within buffered from the street via, again, this 75-foot buffer and a chain link fence with privacy slats. As Mr. Cafrey indicated before, we're requesting a waiver from the requirement for a 25-foot residential buffer in the northwest corner. I think he did a pretty good job explaining that. The nearest building over there is, or the nearest residential building is about 500 feet away, 500-plus feet, and there's, I believe, a recharge basin back there. So there's really not much going on, on that portion of their property that is, again, common ownership with ours. Additionally, we do meet the requirement of the double row of evergreens, which we have in that 10 feet, and again, a fence with privacy slats. Lighting will be compliant with town requirements. There is a trash enclosure that's available onsite that's inside of the secure area for use, and that is, again, all the way on the east side of the building. And then there's, there was an existing driveway in the front of the building that we worked with the planning department on planting specs, and that is that there's some pretty significant plantings in that existing driveway to really bone up that area so that it is a full buffer. There's not just a couple of trees in there. It is, I mean, 10 trees and a number of shrubs. It's really densely planted to ensure that that gets filled in. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, at this time, Steve LaRocco from Frank Ralph's office will be available to discuss the architecture.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Zarko.
It's involving with the, the outdoor storage. I think you mentioned that there were 17 parking spaces on one area and then 16 on the other, correct?
Right, there's 17 available along the LIRR right of way.
Right.
And then 16 immediately to the right of those.
Right, because I'm looking at what I have on the town board's webpage, and it has 24 spots for outdoor storage. And you showed 16 on the, on the TV.
I think you might be looking at, is, is it the same thing that's on the screen right now, or does it look different?
It looks different.
Yeah, I think you might be looking at the plan that we had originally for our change of zone, and then we worked with planning staff. Actually, I think one of the change of zone requirements was that we removed several of those loading stalls in the southeast corner.
Okay.
That is the difference between this plan and that.
All right, so this is on that, but this, that's the amended one that I'm looking on right now on, on the screen.
Yeah, the one, the one that's being presented is the latest plan.
Okay, so it's not 24. I do have another question involving the outdoor parking.
Mr. Zarko, if I could just, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but just to shed some, just to clarify what the issue we just raised with Dan, you are looking at the plan from when we got the change of zone. One of the conditions was that we reduce along the right side from 24 down to 16, that we eliminate eight that were shown. So it will only be the 16. I think we went with bank, land banking instead. So in order to accommodate that banking, we removed the eight spots. So that, that actually is a specific condition that's part of the covenants and restrictions.
All right, I appreciate that, but I have another question in regards to the outdoor storage. The width, I think, 11 foot, and I think they're 30 feet in length. When you have outdoor storage, are they going to be taking up one spot or multiple spots? If you bring a trailer in or a boat in, is it going to be oversized to where it's going to take two spots, or?
Well, it's for trailers, so I think we do anticipate that a trailer might need to use multiple spots, would depend on the size of the boat.
But they'll still fit within the 30.
Or other vehicle.
But they'll still fit within the 30 feet. They're not going to exceed outside the 30 feet?
No.
The, we have 35 foot for some of them on the east side of the building?
Okay, I didn't see the 35. Okay, but either way, they're going to stay within that, that size. They're not going to overflow to the drive area.
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Scard, do you want to speak as well, or you just answering questions?
I think you meant, do you mean Mr. LaRocco, that he's our project architect?
I could, I could run through the elevations if you'd like to bring those up on. Okay, so, so this, what you're seeing here is our notes on the elevations for some of the changes that we made from the planning staff. You'll see on the top right corner, you'll see our previous elevation where we had a squared-off parapet, where we changed that to a reverse gable to give it more of that residential feel. If you go down to the next, it should be item T, you'll see our updated elevations. This was just our markups for some of the changes that we were going to make to the elevations, and then... So the, the planning board emphasized the residential feel on, on, on two of the elevations. So we're using building materials to give it that feel. On the ground floor level, first floor level, you'll see we're using a new brick system by Drive It, but that is, is a EPHIS system, which is a insulating foam with a stucco surface, and it'll look identical to what a, a brick facade would look like. Below that is just a insulation system, which is a little bit of a heavier-duty EPHIS band on the bottom. What separates the ground floor from the second floor is another horizontal EPHIS band. And then at the tower elements and the second floor, you'll see we're using a concrete lapboard, which is kind of like a hardy plank, for those who are familiar with it. Also, on that, that second level, what we did was we added a mansard to give it more of that residential feel. It looks more like it has a hip roof, and then the two reverse gable ends on the proposed south elevation. So we really, for the south elevation and the east elevation, we wanted to give it that residential feel. Whereas the other elevations, we kept the, your typical self-storage materials, which would be a vertical insulated metal panel. And you have your roll-up doors along those sides as well. We have storefronts on the second floor and on the first floor, but we also added in these faux window systems just to give it, again, more of the residential feel. But those, those windows, you do not see into the building, so it would just be an application to the facade that gives it the look, but you don't see into the building in those areas. At some of, at the, at the tower element, we do have real storefronts where you would see into the, into the building. And then I explained, on the ground floor, we, we have the drive-up units where you're going to see the roll-up doors, but that's only on elevation, on the northeast and west elevation. So on Sheep pasture road, you won't see any of the roll-up doors. I think that pretty much runs through the elevations, unless there's any questions in regards to that.
I have one quick question. This is Richard Smith. Any thought of doing the brick along the Dark Hollow side also around the doors? Or is that difficult to work with those overhead doors?
It, it does, it does make it a little bit difficult. You're adding a little bit more expense to, to get that. Typically, with self-storage, it, they come in a panelized system with the insulated metal panels, where you just put it into place, and it gives you the, you know, the R value that you need to pass energy code for those areas.
It's, it's an EPHIS system that looks like brick, like you did on the front.
Correct.
Hard to do in the lower part, below the blue stripe on that, on that east side, that would be difficult?
Not that it would be difficult. I think it would be more cost-effective to, to do it the way that we have it designed.
I also, it, it may be possible that because of the elevation, because it drops off considerably on that side, that with the fence and the screening, it may not be that visible anyway, the lower part, anyway.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Counselor, is anyone in the public wish to speak on this application?
Yes, I have someone here to speak that I just brought in, Mr. Calder.
Okay, I don't, let's see, what's, what's the name?
Alan Calder, C-A-L-D-E-R.
All right. Mr. Calder.
I should be here. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you.
Can you please raise your right hand? You swear to tell, or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, you can speak, Mr. Calder.
So what prompts me to speak is my concern for the development going into this area in general. I live, I guess, about a block and a half to the east, right where Sheep pasture goes over the little railroad bridge, and the traffic there is horrendous. It's been better, of course, since we've been locked down. But as we heard in the presentation, there's a 92-unit apartment retirement complex that's basically adjoining this at the end of my neighborhood. There's supposed to be as many as 35 houses going in. This is a commercial facility, self-storage. It's not going to have that much traffic, but there will be things going along. And I'm just concerned that there's a lot of development going on in this area without any improvements to go along with it. Sheep pasture is very crowded. It's not very fun to walk or run along. And to get out of my neighborhood, I have to at least cross it at the bridge there. So that's my concern.
Okay, Mr. Calder, thank you.
Before we go on, is, does that conclude your testimony? Because the way this works is then I will remove you from the meeting so that the applicant can respond.
That's what I wanted to say. I just hope you'll consider that for this and future situations.
Mr. Calder, thank you. Counselor, you can, is there anyone else in the public?
Let's see. I have no one else.
Okay, questions by the board? No questions by the board, so you can have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing, place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion is closed by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zarko.
I want, yes.
Mr. Alutis? Mr. Alutis? Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Alutis? Chair votes aye, motion carries six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Motion carries seven. Oh, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, again. Good luck. Item number six. Item number six, the talk at terminal phase one is to talk it. Counselor, is there anything you'd like to bring to the board's attention while we're waiting?
I have just brought two of the applicants in. Let's see. I have a few people in the queue that have not discussed who they want to, if they want to speak on something. But only two people, I think we're good.
Okay, so why don't you make your announcement as far as item number?
If you are, if you're in the queue and you wish to speak, and you have not chatted with me or contacted me in the Q and A, I only have a few people. If you'd like to speak on something, please put in the Q and A or in the chat what application you're here to speak on.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. Constantino?
Yes, this is item number six, to talk at terminal phase one. It's a talk it. It's located at 10 North Bellmead Road. The site is 53.8 acres in size and zoned L1 industrial. The applicant with phase one is proposing to obtain certificates for all existing structures, still requiring them. And that includes a 21.5-foot by 27.5-foot concrete building, a 20.6-foot by 15.7-foot metal building, and a vehicle refueling station, which requires a planning board special permit and variances from certain land development standards. This project was previously heard and held from the May 18 hearing. For the board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered one through four, and those are last dated March 24, 2020.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I have Peter St. Germain for the applicant. Patricia Bender for the applicant.
Okay, either one of you attorneys?
No.
Okay, Ms. Bender, Mr. St. Germain, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, so where are you going to represent this application? You can present it now. Ms. Bender, will you be speaking on the application?
I believe Peter St. Germain is supposed to be speaking on this application.
Okay, Mr. St. Germain?
We have no audio for him.
He's muted, that's. Mr. St. Germain, can you hear us? Wait, raise your hand if you can hear us. Okay, you have your mic on mute, you have to unmute it. Okay.
No, we're still not getting any, any audio. There is a way to call in. That should be on the website. And we can hold this for a few minutes and see if, why don't we do this? Why don't we hold this for a few minutes and go on to?
Peter asked, Peter asked if I could talk on our behalf, he just sent me a text.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm, I'm already on, so.
Okay.
So the intent of this, this request is for us to become a, the three, three facilities that we have to become legalized. The two electrical buildings. Pretty much that's it. We provided the information that was requested at the last meeting.
And the, and the fueling, and the fueling.
Yes, and the refueling station, yes, correct, I'm sorry.
That, that was the same elevation that was on the prior application, or did you do something to enhance it or?
No, we just, I said that this, this had changed from the first pictures that we had taken. We had addressed the issues on the building, so you requested additional pictures.
Right, and we have the necessary DEC reports that we asked for at the last hearing?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have a letter from DEC from 2006, but it appears in that letter, there still may be some unanswered questions. And I don't know if there's a follow-up letter from that that goes any further.
That was a removal of certain items on, on the parcel you're referring to?
That, and I think there's some other questions. Mr. Costantino's put up, I only put it up on my own board here.
I, I just joined, this is Peter St. Germain, sorry about that.
Okay, great, thanks.
What, what is he concerned with, Mr. Smith?
I'm, I'm looking at it right now, Mr. Chairman.
Well, he's looking, Mr. St. Germain, can you just explain, this says phase one, is there a phase two, phase three, the follow-up on the site?
Yeah, there's, there's not, no. This started off as original construction application going back to 2017. And we realized we want to build two new tanks here in 2017. And that idea didn't get very far, there's, the barriers were too high and the costs were too high. And we abandoned that idea, but we still realized at the time that we needed to get the permits in place for the existing structures that we have. So that's kind of what this has led to, is just getting a site plan approval for the project that we have. So phase two would have been building new tanks, but that's been completely withdrawn.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I, I, one thing was that Northville, that was, the, the DEC was looking for Northville to submit a work plan, the schedule of compliance of the, of the closure, of the closure activities. I don't know if, if we have that. And there also, there were a number of vapor and groundwater, groundwater monitoring wells that were supposed to be dismantled and removed. And, and I don't think we have anything in the DEC that's, that says either of those things were done.
Mr. St. Germain?
Yeah, we, we do, that, that was all completed, we have closure permits and things like that, it's all been submitted to the DC. This is all, you know, back in what, 2006, I believe?
Right, but did you submit them, we, that's what we were kind of looking for, where they submitted the planning division at Brookhaven.
Yeah, I believe everything was closed out.
Larry, do you have those documents?
I'm only aware of the, the two documents that is available to the board, and that's the DEC letter from June 16th, 2006, and a fact sheet regarding the closure, I think about the same date.
And there's a letter from the DC saying that we met all the criteria laid out in the order of consent, right?
That, that we didn't receive.
Okay, well, we do have that, it wasn't asked for at the last meeting, this, this last meeting was pushed forward because they wanted to see the, the criteria. But it is approved from the DC, we have a letter from them also, saying that the order of consent was met.
Right, you can, you can submit that as soon as possible, what we'll do is we'll condition this application based on receiving of that particular follow-up from DEC.
We, we can do it today, no problem.
Okay, that'd be great, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, that, I was getting my suggestion, if it does exist, it could be part of one of the recommendations.
Okay, yeah, we're going to condition it as well.
Well, would that be, I mean, we'll, we'll agree on this and, under that condition? Because we do have it, it's just it wasn't asked for at the last meeting, so we didn't submit it, but we certainly have that.
Yeah, well, once we finalize the, this discussion, we're going to either close or leave it open, depending what the board determines, and if we close it, we're going to condition the approval based on receipt of that DEC completion letter.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, is anyone in the public?
Yes, I have public speakers. I, I have our first public speaker coming up as Amanda. Okay. Amanda, can you hear me?
She has her mic on mute.
Yes, I can hear, I can hear you.
Okay, so just to let you know, you'll have three minutes to speak. I will let you know when the, the time is coming to a close. And I'll keep you posted, the chairman's going to swear you in.
Excellent.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, you can speak now.
Okay, I have been a longtime resident, 40 years here on Eight Locust Manor Court. I bought up directly to Northville Industries. I was around for the first tank farm explosion back in the early 80s. I was also around for the big, huge spill that contaminated many, many neighborhoods around. There was the settlement done from that as well. I have lots of concerns with Northville. One of my main concerns is their lack of communication and open and honesty. We have, in fact, the latest is that the sign that's on our court here is not even updated with the June 22nd meeting. It's still posted for May 18th, they never updated or sent anybody out to inform anybody.
Okay, can I, can I just interrupt you, Amanda, one second?
Of course you can.
Okay, I appreciate that. At that meeting, when we adjourned to a date certain, there's no reason for the applicant to re-post. The official notice is given when we make a date certain, date change, so that would be the official announcement at that time, just to clarify that.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. My other concerns are also that it seems to be a ongoing problem with Northville of applying for permits after structures have already been built. And this has been going on for my entire lifetime, which is 40 years. They never seem to follow any side of guidelines or rules. They're constantly just doing first and then asking for forgiveness later, that's a very big problem. There's never any sort of communication. There was noise pollution horribly so for three months earlier this, in late winter, early spring, that I called on and was told at that time that they were sandblasting all the tanks. That was never communicated to me, I couldn't even sit in my backyard for many months because of the noise pollution. And we don't even know what any of these phases are. I mean, I just heard that this guy, Peter, says that the second phase was going to be new tanks, but now it's too expensive. We had signed an agreement when I was a little girl, that they were never going to be allowed to build any tanks after the huge explosion, which killed a man, by the way. They were never supposed to be allowed to put any more tanks up. You know, I, I just feel they're very dishonest, and I'm really not happy with the fact that they're applying for permits after the fact of already putting up several of these buildings, whether at the gas station to fuel up their trucks, or whatever the heck their latest gamble is. I do not like the fact that they are putting up and then getting permits after. If that was the case, we should all be able to just put things up and then ask for forgiveness later. There is no communication, and their safety record stands for itself. You can see their spills, their explosions, it's all documented, and I'm very unhappy with Northville.
Does that complete your statement?
That is my complete statement, and I would hope going forward that Northville is more transparent and more informative to their neighbors that live directly behind them.
All right, Amanda, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Do I get a chance to respond to that, is that after?
Yeah, just one moment, please.
We'll bring you in later.
Okay.
Counselor?
Yes, please just give me a moment, and let me bring the other folks in. I have the Giordano's.
I don't see. I don't see them on my screen yet.
Giordano, Mr. and Mrs. Giordano.
Is it Lori and Matt? Lori and Matt, Giordano?
Yeah, they're on mute.
They are not, they're not signing in, I have them off of mute, and I have Lori and Matt.
They're muted, their mic is on mute. Lori and Matt, can you hear me? Mr. and Mrs. Giordano, are you, can you hear me? Is there anyone else, Counselor?
There's no else.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Giordano, can you hear me?
Well, I could, I could leave them up and the applicant can respond, and if they?
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. St. Germain to respond to Amanda's statement.
Yeah, thank you, and Amanda seems very sincere, she, she comes to all of our hearings and we appreciate her concerns. So I've been here for five years, and I can't really attest to things that have happened in the past, a generation ago. And certainly, we can be as apologetic, apologetic as we can for it. I think Northville has done everything to rectify all those situations, and that's a continuation of what we're doing now, is trying to get permits for buildings which have been here from before, before our time. Now, they do have, the, the gasoline tank does have fire marshal permitting and DEC approving, it's just that the town is either not included or we lost it over the years, I'm not sure. And the noise pollution, you know, I, I did go door-to-door in that neighborhood, I don't want to give the impression that we don't care, we do, we're trying to be good neighbors. I went door-to-door in that neighborhood in that spring, saying we're going to be doing maintenance on this tank. And a couple of people came out, most people didn't answer their door, which I understand, this was before COVID, this was last year. But we are making an effort to, to, to speak to our neighbors and update our signs and be good neighbors, so.
Can I stop you there for just a moment, Mr. St. Germain? The Giordano's are on.
Sure.
Can you hear me? Are you?
I, I can see, she's not, her mic is not working. Mr. Giordano, I know you're speaking, but we cannot hear you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, what we could do is hold it open for their written comment, since they're not able to articulate what they'd like to say.
Okay, if, if you can hear us, Mr. Giordano, please raise your hand if you can hear what we're saying. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to leave this, since we cannot hear a word you're saying, we're going to give you seven days to write in whatever comments you want, we'll make that part of the public record, and the board will get those letters and we'll add them into the findings. Do you understand what I'm saying? If you do, raise your hand.
All right, well, we, Mr. Chairman, we put it on the record, so, you know, Mr. Germain, I'm, I'm going to say, Mr. St. Germain, if you have more comments, and at the end of this, we'll hold it open for seven days written comment.
We're going to close.
They're asking you to just read their letter? Can we just read their letter, that's what they're asking?
If we could, yeah, we could read it, but if she can speak, I'd rather hear.
Okay, but if, we don't have to read it into the record, then it's in the record already. If she has nothing further than, we can close the hearing, and her testimony will be the, the the letter that she's written. Are there questions in it?
All right, that's good, so.
She's shaking her head, yes.
Okay, Mr. St. Germain, are you complete?
Yes, depending on what this letter says, yes.
Okay. Well, it's hard for you to address that letter unless you see it, we're not going to get it right away, so.
Oh, okay, I thought they were going to read it.
Larry, do you have some of the points that are in the letter? That, I'm sorry, I just don't have it pulled up in front of me, because I have the other lists.
I'm not sure if I have that letter with me here.
Mr. Giordano, did you send a, a letter into the planning department prior to this?
He did, she did.
So if we could have that letter and we can read it, so Mr. St. Germain can address it, that would be very helpful.
I have it here, I can read it if you'd like.
Is, is there a way to put it up on the screen, or can you just read it?
I don't have a way to put it up on the screen.
All right.
I don't want to make delays, okay.
You can read it.
Our names are Lori and Matt Giordano, and we are current owners of a house on Locust Manor Court that is situated directly across from the Northville tanks. Today, I'm addressing Northville itself and would appreciate their response to these questions so that we all understand what their intentions are concerning the Northville property, so that you, the town board, can make an informed decision concerning the variances that they are requesting. We will make this short and sweet this time. Northville, that we, what are your requests for variances going to be in phase two and phase three? Are they for things that are already in operation or haven't been built yet? Most importantly, please answer whether your company thinks that it may want to be a power plant or a filling station to dispense home heating oil someday in the future. I would really like this and other questions answered and entered into the public record. Based on their answers, I would like to reiterate the point that, just as I knew that my house was across from the tanks, they knew what their property was zoned for, and it wasn't zoned for what they are requesting variances for. Remember, you are supposed to ask for variances first, to get permission, then build and operate, not the other way around. They should not be rewarded for going against town zoning laws. I have enough safety concerns involving this tank farm, I don't want to have to worry about a power plant being right across the fence from my property. And we don't want noise pollution all day long from trucks going in and out of there for a fueling station, for a filling station. The residents of Three Village will not let, let it happen, especially in regard to a power plant. Thanks for your time, and Northville, could you please answer the questions that we asked? Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Sincerely, Lori and Matt Giordano.
All right, thank you, Larry, thank you, Mrs. Giordano. Mr. St. Germain, do you want to address those concerns?
Sure, so there is no phase two or three, there was, it started as one application to build two new tanks, and that became phase one, get all the existing permits, phase two, build the tanks. We, we whiffed through the applications to build the new tanks. So now there is only phase one, which is to get the planning board approval for these three existing buildings, which probably had approval before when they were built, but they're very small buildings. One is a, two of them are small electrical communications buildings, which don't store, carry oil, just small.
which don't, uh, store or carry oil, just small communications buildings. One is a small, uh, gasoline tank that we used to fill up our own pickup trucks, trucks with. So that's, that's it, that there's only Phase One and so those three things. Um, are we gonna build the power plant here? Uh, that would be, that'd be news to me, um, I don't, my answer is no, that's not what this is about. Um, and I didn't catch the other one, home heating oil. Uh, we do store home heating oil, we don't sell it here, but I, I'm not sure if I fully understood that one. Um, but clearly there's some skepticism that we're trying to do, but really I'm trying to, um, complete the application that we put in in 2017 and not build new tanks, but get, uh, approval on the existing structures, that's, that's our goal here.
All right, thank you, Mr. St. Germain. Any questions by the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Smith.
This is Karen Dunn, second motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zarco.
I'm a favor, vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh, thank you. Item number seven...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item number seven, Sonic Restaurant at Shirley. Can you hear me, Larry?
Uh, yes, are you ready?
Yeah, we're trying to keep you here as long as possible. We don't want, we don't want you to go.
Uh, item number seven is Sonic Restaurant at Shirley Plaza. Uh, this site is located at 800 Montauk Highway in Shirley. It's 12.186 acres in size and zone J2 business. The applicant is requesting a special permit for accessory outdoor seating to a restaurant use and this is for a site plan application of Sonic Restaurant. Uh, for the board's consideration, staff has provided recommendations numbered one and two and those are last dated June 10th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present, counselor?
Yes, I have several people on the line for them. Hmm.
Good afternoon, Lisa Cairo, attorney for the applicant.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Lisa Cairo.
Okay. And you are a counselor, okay. You, you have any colleagues with you at this time?
The other individuals are Tom Walsh from Joseph T. Matthews Architect um, and Robert Finelli on behalf of Sonic and Ryan Brown on behalf of, on behalf of the applicant, Gold Shirley Real Estate.
Okay, so if I could have those three gentlemen raise their right hand, let me know when they're up. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, counselor.
Thank you. As the board may remember, we were before you back in December 2019 with respect to a special permit for an accessory major restaurant, which is the Sonic Restaurant. We were also requesting certain variances associated with that special permit and site plan approval. During that hearing, it became a realization that the accessory outdoor seating was not denied as its own separate special permit. So the request for outdoor seating was removed from the application back in December of 2019 when we appeared before you. Thereafter, this board did approve the site plan and special permit, including a condition that there be no outdoor seating. So that decision was issued in January of this year. After receiving that decision, the applicant submitted an updated plan, now including the outdoor seating, and we received an updated denial for outdoor seating, requiring a special permit. Also, we were required, based on the proposed outdoor seating that is anticipated, we were required to request certain variances for this, from the special permit criteria for outdoor seating from the zoning board. And that hearing took place on March 25th of this year. We did receive the requested variances for certain special permit criteria for the outdoor seating. So we are back before the planning board this afternoon requesting that approval be granted of the site plan as is with the outdoor seating. Other than the outdoor seating now being part of the proposed Sonic Restaurant, nothing else on the site plan has changed since the last approval issued by the planning board uh, back in January of this year.
All right, thank you, counselor. Do we have elevations showing the seating area if there's boughs or if there's any containment as far as security and safety for the outdoor seating?
Yes, there should be, that should be provided on the elevation.
Now, one other thing, if we're going to close this, you should know that we can't finalize it because we're still waiting for comments from Suffolk County Planning Commission.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, uh, if Mr. Walsh is on the line. I know he was having a little trouble getting on, but he might be...
He's on, I see him, I did, he has his microphone muted.
There we go, um...
I'm unmuted now, um, I'm just trying to, there they are, right there.
Yeah, right there.
That image right there.
The west elevation showing the outdoor seating area, that roofed over area.
The field plan is just on the left side of the page.
Right there.
Twenty-four seats.
So it's gonna just be six tables of four each.
It looks like, Mr. Chairman, there's a low brick wall with a couple openings around there and some sort of, I don't know if it's glass or whatever above, um, that's gonna separate that area from the driveway and the rest.
Okay, as long as there's security barriers or some means, because right next to that you have a drive-through teller, a bank, uh...
That is correct, there's a three-foot-high knee wall and there's wind, wind glass above it and there's very, uh, narrow entrances to that patio from the sides of the, uh, parking areas.
Okay, that's good. Uh, counselor, do we have anybody, uh, public on this?
I have no one from the public.
Any questions by the board?
Yes, um, this is Karen Dunn. I'm just, I was just at that parking lot yesterday at that drive-through bank and it's one of the worst parking lots I've driven in, in recent history. I'm just making sure that it's gonna be completely repaved because it's pretty dangerous right now.
Yes.
Uh, the whole, the whole corner is gonna be, uh, redeveloped, so the whole area will be repaved.
It will be repaved.
Good.
Other questions by the board? May I have a motion? May I have a motion, please?
I'm muted, sorry. Um, make a motion to hold this matter open for written comment from the Suffolk County Planning Commission.
Uh, we're gonna close the hearing and leave it open for the letter from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. We're not gonna hold the meeting open, we're gonna close it.
We're gonna close the hearing, but hold the matter open for that written comment.
Correct, okay, motion by Ms. Dunn?
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarco?
Vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
I vote aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, item number eight is being held to July 27th. Item number nine thirty, the Green at Shirley.
Um, I have Peter Perillo on for this application.
Okay, Larry, can you read the, uh, item number nine thirty?
Uh, item number nine thirty, the Green at Shirley. Uh, this site is located at the northwest corner of the Green and Roberts Road in Shirley. It is 4.020 acres in size and zone J2 business. Uh, the proposal is to convert a former bowling alley into retail space and a roller rink and requires a planning board special permit for an assembly and social recreation hall and a variance for amount of parking. Uh, for the board's consideration, staff has provided, uh, recommendations numbered one through thirteen and those are last dated May 8th, 2020.
Thank you, Larry. All right.
Another moment, I also have Dominic Arresta for the applicant.
Okay, either one of the gentlemen determines?
No.
Okay, if not, please raise your right hand. Both of you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, one of you can speak.
Okay, so, uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Dominic Arresta. I'm here presenting on behalf of JM2 Architecture and the, uh, building owner for Thirty the Green. So, uh, as you may know, it was previously a bowling alley and, uh, it shut, shut down several years ago. So, um, the building owner now has, um, a request to rent out the building from, um, a mercantile use, which is a Dollar Tree, and then also keeping, uh, two-thirds of the building recreational, um, a roller rink and arcade space. Uh, if you guys have any questions specific to the roller rink or arcade space, which is the left side, if you're looking at the plan on the screen, uh, Peter Perillo represents the, the roller rink space. So generally our application is to just, uh, change the use of the building, uh, which requires a, uh, parking variance. Um, we did look at adding more parking, but, uh, the site is pretty much all covered with, uh, either building or, or parking lot, how it is. Um, there's also, um, proposed cross lot access between the new 711, which is to the west of the site and, um, we think that the parking should not be an issue because of the two proposed uses. Uh, the roller rink would be operating primarily at the evening hours while the Dollar Tree store would be operating primarily during the day. We're not proposing any changes to the building footprint. Uh, the primary exterior change would be on the north facade, which includes a, um, some storefront glass and, uh, the entry to the Dollar Tree would be on the north side as well. Um, there are several site improvements required by the planning board, which we plan to meet, which includes, uh, new plantings around the site boundary, um, new, new lighting at the entrance of the, of the Dollar Tree store and, um, repainting of the building as you can see here in the, in the renderings. Um, and really just, just, uh, cleaning up the site and, um, just making it look presentable in, uh, 2020. Um, if you guys have any, any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, when you, the, the north side, this kind of house, the dollar, is that going to be, I don't see any retail-looking type of elevations other than the center doors, and I assume they're going to the roller rink.
Uh, well, um, those two doors that you see that are blue, that, uh, they're on the north side, so there's really not gonna be any large storefront glazing. Uh, we, we did leave the, the signs out of, of the renderings because, um, those will, um, we'll make an application for those in the, in the future.
Right, but it, it's you, you incorporating a retail use into this building?
Correct.
Two doors, to me, don't make a retail environment.
Um, I agree, but, um, it wasn't in Dollar Tree's, uh, requirements to provide any large storefront, um, glazing. Uh, originally, we thought about proposing the, um, the entrance on the, the green side, uh, next to the roller rink, but, um, Dollar Tree was adamant about having their entry on the north side of the building and, um, they don't need any large storefront glass, um, as part of their program.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
They don't need, they might not need storefront glass, but I think aesthetically, wouldn't it a lot nicer if you did have some?
I, I, I agree, I agree, um, it would look more appealing, but, um, we're hoping with, uh, redoing the site and, um, you know, the new entrance, um, barring any, uh, new, new large storefront glass that, um, we can still make it appealing and, um, look presentable. So, um, you know, additional storefront glass would just be...
Signage and it just looks like a, not very appealing.
I, I agree, um, you know, the whole site will be fixed up, the, uh, building will be painted.
Well, I'm glad you agreed because I haven't even questioned the rest of the board yet, but I, I got a feeling we're gonna hold this to another date so you can come back with some elevations that are more of a retail environment, whether Dollar Tree wants it or not. If they don't want it, then the application will be approved.
Understood.
I mean, I, I'll wait to call the board, that was my concern, but, uh, I'll wait to hear from the rest of the board. You wanna complete your, uh, presentation, you can go ahead, but I'm just telling you, as it looks right now, that's not going to be good for any retail and it's not something, because it's an existing structure, it looks like hell right now, there's no reason to leave it in that condition unless we have the opportunity to make it better.
Right, I, I understand, so, um...
Uh, can the rest of the board speak?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I think that they should come back with new elevations.
Yeah, it's gotta...
I have another question, Mr. Chairman, I'm look, I'm looking at this floor plan layout and, and, um, I don't see, I see the left side of, of the building. I don't see a layout for a roller rink in there, it's just an open space with a bunch of columns in it. Are you gonna do a roller rink with a bunch of columns in the middle of it?
Uh, correct, yeah, the, the columns would not be relocated. Um, uh, all, all padding and necessary precautions, uh, would be, would be taken to leave the columns in the existing locations, but, uh, the, the primary part of the roller rink would be on the outside of those columns.
Could you, could you, if you're coming back, show us the layout of how that roller rink is, is going to work? I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Counselor, is there anyone in the public, uh, in the chat room that would like to also speak on this application before we hold it?
I have someone who, uh, said they may wanna speak on it, I'm gonna bring them in.
Okay.
And then I have a question, Mr. Chairman, afterwards.
Okay.
Okay.
Who do I have?
Do you have a question regarding, uh, this application at the Green?
I don't have a que, oh, well, my question is to the gentleman...
Well, wait, hold, please, hold on one second, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and your name?
Kylie Holder.
Okay, Ms. Holder, go ahead.
Hi, I was just, um, to the gentleman who asked about the column, I was wondering, does he actually skate and are the people applying to make the roller rink consulting with anyone who does in the state? As far as the layout of the rink and everything is concerned?
Um, per, personally, I do not skate and, um, I'm not sure if the, if the owner of the roller rink is bringing in anyone from New York State to, um, consult with on the design. Uh, I do know Peter is, is present, Peter, maybe you wanna answer her question?
Before we do that, um, ma'am, do you have any other comments? Because after you're finished with your comments, um, that you'll, your time would be up. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna take you out of the hearing and you can watch, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you need me to speak now?
I guess we're waiting for Peter?
Yeah, just give me one moment so I can fix this, but yes, you can, you can speak.
Okay, so, so as regarding the columns, um, there is probably half the roller rinks in, across the, the country have beams in them, so what they do is they pad them. We have 22 feet on each side of the, of clearance space on each side of the beam. So you have 22 feet round around the whole rink. The middle, they still use as, you know, skating thing, but most of the time you're skating around in an oval. So you're not really, the, the beams are not going to affect...
So, you're not really, the beams are not going to affect you like you think. Like, if you were to take out those beams, it would, it's not feasible even to do, and most spaces in where we live don't have column-free spacing. So, even, even the rugby, the girls rugby team, they, in Florida, they have beams all in there, and they still do it with beams, so.
Can I interject? One of the questions that I, that just came up in my queue is, has to do with the elevations as far as who would be operating it, and what those elevations would look like.
The elevations as far as what, the floor?
As far as who might be operating the roller rink. If it's a corporate, will they have corporate colors?
No, it's not corporate, we're private.
Okay.
Yeah, we're private.
I would like to add that the renderings provided are only for the Dollar Tree side of the, of the building. When we initially applied, the Dollar Tree was going to be the primary use, that was taking over a third of the building, and the rest of the building was sort of undecided. The roller rink came on a little later, therefore, the renderings provided show in the west and the east elevations, just, just the Dollar Tree side.
Okay, so, what you need to do is go back to your architect, your engineer, and come up with some type of retail elevation for the north side, and maybe perhaps even the east, and then complete the elevations for the roller rink to see how the system flows through the entire building.
So, what do you, what do you require out of the revised elevations for the retail section?
Retail use is going, we want to see some, some glazing in there, we want to see some windows, as far as the building itself, we're not asking you to put any power picks or anything of that nature, but two doors just doesn't constitute a retail environment, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I would, I would also like to add that we were not planning on renovating the elevation for the roller rink side of the building, we're going to keep the existing main entry and egress stores.
Right, but the colors, I mean, the, the building is going to be uniform all the way around, as far as the coloring and the band across the top, I would assume.
Right, so, I mean, the, the main change is going to be to the, to the north elevation. We're planning on moving the, the east elevation the same as far as the entrances go, and just change the, the colors and the appearance.
So, the only entrance to the Dollar Tree is going to be those, the double door that we're looking at on the north side? There's not going to be any?
Yeah, the north side, so, yeah, if you want us to take a look at adding more, more glass and windows.
Without a doubt.
We could do that.
Okay.
And, and I would also like to see the layout of how the roller rink is going to fit, what your intentions are in the, in the first plan.
Yeah, that's easy.
All right, counsel, anyone else in the public?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
As far as the roller rink is concerned, can you tell us, Dominic, what the hours of operation would be?
Peter, you want to touch on that? I think Peter would have a better idea.
Well, it's like, the roller rink itself, on Friday nights, we're still waiting to hear back from what the town is going to suggest, or what, like, late we can go, but we're not looking to be a bar, but the normal roller skating rink closes like around twelve, one o'clock on a Friday and a Saturday. The rest of the week would be earlier.
Okay, is there going to be any food or alcohol being served inside?
How it is right now, the bowling alley itself, the whole main thing is there, so nothing has changed. The whole snack bar, the whole little bar area is there. All we're basically doing is they took the lanes out, and we are going to just put the roller rink and the whole part where the lanes are. So basically, you're going to see the whole entire floor is going to be a roller rink where the lanes were, and everything else is not going to change. The entrance, everything you first walk in, it'll be like you almost walked back into the bowling alley. The bathrooms, all the, the fixtures and all that stuff is all going to be brand-new, but the roots are basically there from the bowling alley.
Oh, you will get a state liquor license, I guess, to serve alcohol?
Yes, yes.
I, I would also like to add that it's thirty-six seats, and that's consistent with the previous Health Department approval for the, for the bowling alley.
Would there be any outside activities, or any kind of patio area, or amusing?
No, sir. No, sir.
And, something like this, would there be any kind of security of?
Yeah, security on Friday and Saturday nights, absolutely. People patrolling the parking lot, we're also going to have inside security, and then also with, we're also during the day, since the kids are in school, we're going to be doing pickleball in there as well. Pickleball is very big right now, so I'm an avid pickleball player, so we're going to have three pickleball courts on the, on the, on the skating rink, because it's being done all over the United States now, with doing pickleball on roller rinks. So, we'll be using that facility for pickleball, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, probably, all day, all night, and then the roller skating rink will be open probably Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're like, you know, we're going to see what works for the hours, and maybe change in the, if we'd be.
I can honestly say I have no idea what pickleball is.
Like miniature tennis.
Yeah, like if you go to your, your, your town park in Center Beach, you guys took every tennis court there, added three pickleball courts, and now you have, you have eleven pickleball courts, and they still can't keep, they still don't have enough courts, let's put it that way.
All right, well, thank you very much for those answers, and good luck with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the applicant, I know that you have to go for the planning department for your signage, how are we looking at elevations, and they're not centered over the door, is, can you provide some sort of idea of where the signage is going to be? And what, I mean, not exactly what it's going to look like, but, you know, the door, I see two red lines, and they're not centered over the door in any way, it just looks really haphazard, and...
Right, so, the signs move over the door, where that space is, and between the two, two red lines, that would likely be the Dollar Tree sign, and then the roller rink side would be on the east elevation where the AMF sign is currently.
Over the door, it just, the whole building just looks, I don't know.
Well, I think the applicant has to come back with new elevations, so at that time, at that time, we'll try and make it a little more symmetrical. I see what you're saying now. Mrs. Zorko, you have a question, Mrs. Arkon?
Yes, I did, thank you. I was just wondering if you can tell me, you mentioned that you were private on the roller rink. Do you, by chance, operate any other roller rinks on Long Island or anywhere else?
No, we do not.
This is your first endeavor.
Trying to do for a long time, so I've been trying to get retailers, I mean, you know, some kind of space, commercial space, and it's been a tough road, believe me, for the past two years, trying to get space. This was the first place that, that has basically given us the time of day, so.
And you have an architect that helps you with the layout of the roller rink?
Or is it yourself? With other design companies and other roller rink owners, I'm in the roller skate association, and so they helped us out, and so we've been getting our information from all other rink owners across the United States.
All right, and with the roller rink itself, you're going to have the interior portion, where you said it's not going to be used for roller skating, but you're going to have a wall that's going to keep people from going on the inside, correct? Not hit those columns?
Yes, they're going to be, there's going to be like, I don't know if it's going to be forty-two inches high, it's, that'll be submitted with the building plans, but it's going to be made of concrete, just like everywhere else. It's going to be like a, basically like a handrail kind of thing, type of thing, but you'll be able to stop them, because it's going to be concrete, so, so pitch like, just like a hockey rink, but it'll be concrete.
All right, and one question too, because you said you're going to have pickleball, and I know pickleball is very big down in Florida, so, and it's pretty big up here now, it's getting there, but you're going to have four pickleball courts on the off days, I guess I'll call it. The elevation of the, of the floors, is it going to be a flat floor on the roller skate rink, or is it going to have a sort of a pitch?
No, it's completely flat, so the lanes came out, and then there's very smooth concrete there, so they're just going to, you know, they're going to do the floor, and then there'll be the pickleball lines will be on, there'll be three courts, not four. Can't fit four because of the poles.
Okay.
I could, the space is there to fit four, but the poles obstruct the fourth court, so there'll be three, I'll be doing lessons, I'm going to have clinics for kids. I do a lot of training with pickleball right now with kids, so I'm going to do it mostly with kids, seniors, and stuff like that, so it's, it's, you know, it's very, it's growing fast, so.
All right, and the last thing, what's the width of the, of the roller rink, of the, of the lane?
I think, I think the roller rink is eighty-eight wide, I think that was, I think that's what we came up with, eighty-eight wide and a hundred and thirty long, so.
All right, so you figure twenty-five, thirty feet on both, right around the whole rink, or?
Yeah, I think around the whole rink is, from, you know, from wall to beam, is like twenty-one to twenty-two feet, I think, and then on the ends, there's a lot more, obviously, because those beams are, and for the ends, you're probably going to have, you know, thirty feet, thirty-five feet.
Going to widen out on the curbs.
Yeah, you'll have very wide space on the curbs, like, I mean, I don't know if you remember, two thousand and two, they had six columns there. You, I know USA Roller Skating didn't have, that's like one of the first ones, but most places have, they put, in the middle, they put a dance floor, and they keep the poles up. That's, that's what most places do.
And just my last question, what's the, what do you figure you can have there as far as, you know, patrons, as far as on a roller rink? What can you handle as far as?
It's, it's all depending on what the fire marshal says, but you can have two hundred to three hundred people at a clip in other roller rinks, that's what I'm, you know, the average session will be, two to three hundred kids. We're going to cater mostly to kids, and then the pickleball will be kids and seniors, you know? I'm not looking, you know, it's more, it's more for the, you know, to give the kids something to do, there's not very, my, right now, my kids trek all the way to Hicksville to go roller skating. We don't have a roller rink here.
All right, and is it, Peter, there's ample parking around that area, too? I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, there's a hundred and, like, thirty-five spots or a hundred and fifty spots in that area.
Yeah, there's also cross lot access to the lot, to the north, and there's also future proposed cross lot access to the seven-elevens to the west, and I would also like to add that our Health Department applications, based on the New York State occupancy count, were submitting for a hundred and eighty skaters and a hundred and ninety-five spectators. So, obviously, that would most likely be much more than would be in the space at once, but that's what's permitted under, under the code, so it'll likely fall back into the Fire Marshal's hands.
Okay, so what I'd like to do now is have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I just, Karen, I just, I just wanted to say one thing, which is, I think there's a lot of community support and need for this facility. I think it will be well utilized. I just completely agree with your statements and Ms. Kelly's statements that we need much better building elevations on both sides, but particularly the Dollar Tree side, before we can approve this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dunn. Any other questions, by the board?
Just, just one other comment. At that, that occupant load, you should check with your design professional, you may need more bathrooms than you have already.
Well, but the bowling alley had seven hundred and sixty people, we only have four hundred and some people, I think it was five hundred people?
Well, just, just check with your design professional.
Okay.
Seven hundred and sixty, why is four hundred? I don't know.
I don't think I've ever seen seven hundred and sixty people in that bowling alley, but...
Yeah, I got the picture of it, it's posted on the wall still.
Seven hundred and sixty people?
Yeah.
Well, like Mr. Smith says, just double-check before you.
It's the recommendation.
Yeah, all right, so, who's this, Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to have this held, gentlemen, it's about a month away, is that sufficient time for you to come up with new elevations? Or do you need to, that's sufficient time?
Yes.
Yeah, just make sure it's retail-looking environment. Okay, Ms. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to hold this matter open to a date certain of July twenty-seventh, 2020.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dunn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, gentlemen, we will see you on the twenty-seventh, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten is being held until the twenty-seventh, so I'd like to go back to item number one.
Mr. Chairman, this is being held to July twenty-seventh?
Okay, item number two, Free Village Historic Museum, that's a talk.
Mr. Chairman, like, motion to approve site plan revision with conditions or staff recommendations, one and two, last revised June twelfth, 2020, as conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zorko.
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Who did I finish? And the chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, make a motion to, make a motion to approve this application for a facade renovation at an existing gas station and convenience store with legalization of a six-foot by twenty-two-foot propane, propane tank distribution area and a new dumpster enclosure with staff recommendations one through twelve, amending number nine to include any fifty-five gallon drums that presently exist, last stated May twentieth, 2020, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one quick...
I need a second, I need a second on it before you can...
No, but I wanted to, I wanted to see if that would be amended, because the applicant said they'd be willing to, to add a condition of redoing the paving and restriping.
I understand, but I need a second before we can discuss it. Does anyone want a second on that motion?
All right, I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Smith, okay, no, if you want to amend it, go ahead.
Do we want to add or amend the condition in the striping? I think it was number nine to also include restriping all of the parking lot in that area.
You want to amend it, because I think on the public record, you said they were doing that, correct? As well as the handicap with the ramp that's to the, on the west side.
Yeah, and that, the handicap striping was in there, but not the rest of it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend my original motion, it's number eight, that we're going to add that they will repave and restripe all parking, not just the handicap parking.
Exactly, okay, and second by Mr. Smith.
Second, yes, thank you.
Mr. Zorko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number four, St. Joseph's College Student Center and Parking at Patchogue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt a neg deck on this application.
Motion for a neg deck by Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion, this is Pete Zorko.
Second by Mr. Zorko, Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application, subject to all staff recommendations, number one through nineteen, last revised June ninth, 2020, including planning board variances, number one through eight, which are eighty-five point eight four three point eight two, eighty-five eight point three point eight four, eighty-five eight point eight four three point eight eight, eighty-five point eight four three point A B, eighty-five eight point eight four three point eight nine, eighty-five eight five two, and eighty-five point eight by five point A, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Kelly.
Yeah, this is board number Pete Zorko, I'll second that motion.
Motion by, second by Mrs. Zorko, Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number five, RA two twenty-five, report Jefferson Station.
Chairman, I make a motive, a motion for a negative declaration.
Motion for a neg deck by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zorko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve site plan for the construction of a new storage, self-storage facility of eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ten square feet with associated site improvements, with a special permit eighty-five five six nine G for mini storage facility, and special permit eighty-five dash five six nine J for outdoor overnight parking, and a planning board variance eighty-five...
and a planning board variance 85-843B2 for 25 residential buffer required and 10 provided. And like to make that with, in conjunction with staff recommendations, number 1 through 11, last revised May 21, 2019, or 2020, I'm sorry, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Okay, motion by Mr. Smith?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zorko?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Sitakia Terminal, Phase 1, is a talk.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a negative declaration.
Motion for a neg deck by Mr. Smith?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Zorko? Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0.
And Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve a site plan application to obtain certificates of occupancy for existing structures with special permit 85-565B, which would be a fueling station, and with planning board variances 85-843A6A, which would be 30% landscaping for use over 5 acres. 85-843A2, minimum front yard setbacks. 85-843A6C, required front yard landscaping. 85-843B2C, minimum residential buffer for industrial use over 5 acres. And 85-843B3, provide residential buffer for residential zoning across street, 75 minimum, only 19 provided. Like to approve this with staff recommendations, actually, 1 through 4, which were last dated on March 24, 2020, but I want to add a fifth recommendation that they submit a letter from the New York State DEC which shows that the conclusion of the items that they were required to do by the DEC in the letter dated in 2006. And I'd say those, that, these recommendations would be as of today's date, which is June 22, 2020, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
All right, Mr. Smith, I just got to ask Counselor a question. Are we making that a recommendation or are we making it a condition for the approval?
I think it's up to you. I think it can be a condition of approval. It's just a piece of paper that they already have, so they could submit it.
I would amend the motion, Mr. Smith, to say, not as a recommendation, but the approval would be contingent upon acceptance of the completion of the DEC requirement letter.
Well, that would be--
A condition.
Condition number five.
Okay, all right, so can I have a second on that?
I second that motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mrs. Zorko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Sonic Restaurant, Shirley.
We closed this but held it open for written comment?
We closed it?
That's what--
Self-County Planning.
No, we can, okay, it's closed.
So do I make the motion regarding the rest or--
No, we closed it, we held it open for--
Self-County Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Lowe's is on the 27th, De Green and Curly's on the 27th, Old Oats is on the 27th. Anything the board would like to discuss before we adjourn?
Yes, can we adjourn or the July 13 meeting at this point in time?
Lee, do we need to do that or we're just not, and set a date or set a--
I mean, we can put it on the record and make a motion, you know, and put it on the record that the July 13 meeting's canceled. We don't have anything scheduled for that date, so--
Let's make it officially, Ms. Dunn.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the July 13 planning board meeting will be canceled and any items that would have been on that calendar be held on July 27, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Dunn?
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mrs. Zorko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Alutis?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that meeting will be canceled and all items will be posted to July 27. And before we adjourn, once again, Larry, I don't know what we're gonna do without you.
Okay.
Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Larry.
Good luck, Larry.
It's been a pleasure working with you, Paul.
We miss you.
Thank you.
We owe tip in a dollar a week, will you stay?
Well--
I know it's tempting. All right, can I, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zorko, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Zorko?
I'll second that, Mr. Alutis?
Second by Mr. Alutis, Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Dunn? Ms. Kelly? I vote aye, meeting adjourned, thank you, be safe, and once again, good luck, Larry.
Thank you, thank you very much.